I call out the order of this regular meeting, the Monument Town Council, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now, and this meeting is for Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Ms. Erickson, can we take roll, please?
Let's member chronic.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Mayor La Kind.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
And councilmember Romanello is absent.
Okay, first up disclosures of conflicts of interest, Mr. Cole, any declared conflicts of interest?
No, sir, not for tonight's meeting.
Okay, and we have an agenda, a consent agenda, any modifications to the agenda? Mr. Chief, Mr. Regan, Regal?
Yes, Chief Regal here. We will not be doing the oath office for Sergeant Lavoy tonight, he's unable to make it.
Okay, so we have a modification to the agenda that we'll, at a future date.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so any other modifications to the agenda? All right, seeing that, I'll look for a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda and the current agenda as modified.
Second.
Second.
A motion in a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
I.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
A motion passed six zero. First up, we have council reports. Councilmember Chronic and Abbott, will you be actually speaking to those? Or were they just submitted?
I don't see a need to talk, speak to them, I think their reports speak for themselves.
Okay, was there any, was there any celebrity?
A stranger just appeared.
Dude, sorry, do we, do we have anybody who had any questions on the, on the reports that were submitted?
They were good reports, thank you for putting them up, I appreciate it, very enlightening.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we'll move on to ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty four, and ordinance approving the twenty twenty four Comcast franchise agreement with the town of Monument, Mr. Cole.
Mr. Mayor, this is brought back to you with some modifications as directed by council from the previous consideration, the, the primary change is in terms of the letter of credit associated with construction in the town's right of way, the previous draft provided for twenty thousand dollars and this current draft before you provides for an amount of fifty thousand dollars. That's, that's contained in sections nine point six, and then that's the primary change that we have to this one from your previous consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for, well, thank you to Comcast for willing to work with the town on that, is, is there people from Comcast here? All right, talk about my internet when we're, no, kidding.
Yeah, mine goes out every morning when my wife.
Yeah, we actually may have to have a conversation, it's more him, he's got the problem. Is your wife on? She's.
She's at a school board meeting.
Blame her.
She's at a school board meeting.
Okay, is there anybody who's got any questions or comments about the ordinance as modified from the original? Okay, well, it's a public hearing item, we will open up to the public, anybody here would like to speak for or against ordinance eleven, twenty twenty four? I would assume you would speak for it. Come on up.
My name's Gary Mala, I'm director of government affairs for Comcast, just want to say really proud to serve the community, serve the town monument as long as we have, and again, I'm here to handle any issues or any, any questions that you all have, we come in town and, so, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council, Sac Rothmeyer, regional manager for Comcast, just happy to answer any questions you have on the franchise, thank you, Mayor.
I actually do have a question, I don't know if it pertains to the franchise agreement itself, but are there any areas within Monument that are underserved to both the, the FCC standards that have been rolled out most recent? Or, because there are obviously pockets of newer homes that are getting multi-gig speeds, and then there are those who, who can't get.
I don't have the construction notes with us, so the title of the FCC maps, they release for the B program, I can certainly check with that and get that.
It'd be great to know that, because there's some other providers that are, that made it clear that they're not going to be rolling out, I would love to make sure that Monument has gig everywhere.
Let's have our construction team tomorrow.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Anybody online, Will?
I say you know me, it's Ray's mayor.
Okay, bring it back to the council for further discussion or emotion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty four and ordinance approving the twenty twenty four Comcast franchise agreement with the town of Monument.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorio.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
All right, that motion passed six zero, looks like we're stuck with each other for another twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, ordinance sixteen, twenty twenty four, an ordinance submitting to the eligible electors voting in the town's regular election to be held on November fifth, a ballot issue concerning the imposition of a lodging tax and contingent upon elector approval amending the Monument Municipal Code to provide for the same, Mr. Cole?
This ordinance, you've also seen a couple of times before, and we're bringing it to you tonight, hopefully for approval and moving forward with it, it puts the ballot proposal in front of the voters, if you approve it for a lodging tax, the revisions in this, this draft wrote a specify that the proposed rate would be five percent. The estimated revenue for the first year would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The ordinance also amends chapter three point one four of your municipal code to implement the lodging tax if it is approved by the voters. The area that I would like you to think about and confirm or, or provide additional revisions tonight are the use of the revenues based on the most recent discussions, what we have specified in here is the use of revenues for town-owned parks and then also for the lodging tax administration collection and enforcement compliance. Be happy to answer any questions. That's, that's what I have for right now.
Okay, so first off, I really, the appendix, the ducket posted that was sent to the board docs, there was a word, a document.
The. It was the revised exhibit A to the ordinance.
I just wanted to call out, we will, is there any part of that that we will have to draft as it pertains to the licensing for short-term rentals? Or is that, is that already been done? Because I don't remember us discussing it, and I know that licensing is a topic within the, the modifications that are being made to the ordinance.
I had a similar question about short-term lodging and how that this affects or, yeah.
Well, because we don't have a short-term, so, we don't have a short-term rental ordinance.
Ordinance, right.
And, but it does say in this document that under twenty, under thirty days would be impacted, and, and we haven't established a licensing fee.
Yeah, term, yeah, exactly.
I just want to know how, would we be doing that immediately after this passes or fails, if it passes?
So we'll be bringing.
Go ahead, sorry.
We'll be bringing to you another ordinance that contains sales and use tax and some lodging tax administration provisions, that'll be coming to you either in September or no later than early October that we've been working on with, with your finance team and your sales tax collection consultant.
Okay. All right, well, this also is a public hearing item.
I have some questions.
Oh, I was gonna. Yes, this has, this puts it on the ballot. No, no, no.
That does not, that part does not, okay.
No, just this.
So, so I have a question about, about the park scenario for Madeline, because she's most familiar in the room. So this, let's just say it hits the target, generates two hundred and twenty thousand, but maybe it's really good and generates more than that. Is, is there a, a top end of what we can absorb into the park system? I know two twenty doesn't buy much in park equipment, so.
Correct, I mean, I think with the four hundred thousand that we're putting into Limbot Park, that's a pretty minimal playground that we're going to be able to put in, so we have lots of other playgrounds that need work, so I think that will help us generate revenue for these park projects for several years. There's, there's a lot of improvements that can be done throughout the, throughout the parks, on town-owned parks.
So this, this would be a low number of what you could use if we hit this target.
Right, so.
It also can be all that they get, we've been, we've been funding that.
No, I understand, but I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is, is if this would ever become an obsolete thing because we generated enough money off of the lodging tax to take care of all the park needs, or is this something that would always be ongoing?
Well, playground equipment will generally need to be updated every probably ten to fifteen years, I would imagine, the surfacing gets worn out, so there's a lot of maintenance costs in parks that we probably haven't always done a great job of addressing in the past, so I imagine that we'll be able to continue to do work in our parks.
And, and I'm assuming this is trails as well, is that trails is a separate, are we, are we putting trails under the parks rubric?
So when we do our comprehensive plan, we also would like to do an updated parks master plan as well, and then we will create a list of projects, trails, parks, open space, that we can address, and we will need funding in order to address all of those issues.
So this would go beyond the playground equipment, this would be open space that the town owns, that's kind of designated parkland.
Correct, yeah.
Like the northern end of Conexus, for example, that's, that's technically a park, even though it's not going to have playground equipment in it.
Right, so it just says town-owned parks, so, well, I mean, we'll have a lot of restorative restoration to do in that park alone, you know, right there, so trails, open space, park equipment, there's a number of different things that we can use these funds for.
Will it be used like for trees and stuff, or is that separate?
Like, trees within parks is probably an acceptable use within open spaces, so yes, it could be used for that, too.
And this might be a question more for, for Mr. Cole, but the, the the ballot initiative talks about parks, town-owned parks, does that, how tight does that, is that read legally, or does that give us elbow room to look at open spaces, trails, do we, I don't want to change it again, but the, does, does the word parks bound us too tight?
So we're willing to bind you as tight as you want to be bound, and no tighter. The way this is written is, is it references this ordinance, ordinance number sixteen, twenty twenty four. The ordinance incorporates exhibit A, which will go into your town code, and the very last section there, if you look at that, three point one point one five zero reserves the right to amend any part of, of this chapter, including the restrictions on the uses, without going back to the voters, as long as you don't change the, the amount of the tax, so it gives you lots of flexibility, but it does initially earmark this for these purposes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
But then, like I say, you can be bound more tightly or more loosely?
I would, I would prefer more loosely if we're looking at trails and open spaces and, yeah, public, yeah, public record. I know that from a legal standpoint, these ballot initiatives tend to be very nitpicky, but.
That's because if you don't make them nitpicky.
Correct, yeah.
Things can go sideways.
Sure, and, and, and there, there's a balance, right, between too loose and, but then if it's too tight, then we kind of handcuff our staff to, too much.
I would assume if it's in the park inventory, that's good enough.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe I should clarify my comment a little bit, because of that provision, you would currently have to use the revenue for town-owned parks and lodging administration, et cetera. But if you come back and amend the town code, this provision of the town code in three one four oh three oh through, through an ordinance, then by ordinance, you could expand the uses.
Okay, thank you.
And that's because, again, the ballot question incorporates the terms of the ordinance, and the ordinance references that exhibit, the ordinance adopts that exhibit.
Gotcha, thank you. I'm done. Um, so there's a, a sentence in there that talks about excluding, including local IGAs. What was the driver behind putting that condition?
Yeah, that, that came out of a conversation, I can't remember which meeting, but it came out of one of the meetings. And we were asked to put in the, that restriction as it was contained in, I believe it was your, your law enforcement tax ballot question. And so we went back to that question and pulled that language out of there.
Okay. Because I, I'm, I'm good with the ballot except for that, that one sentence, because there are town-owned parks that are on the east side, and this gives the impression that this is, this tax is only going to be used on the west side. And as we all know, Tri-View is on both the west side and east side of I twenty five, so it is, I'm kind of trying to understand what, what's the plan for this tax, is it only for the west side, or are we going to use it for all of Monument?
It's, I don't think that you, I don't read anything to indicate that it's not for the entire town.
Town-owned is the, is the key, that's what we, that's why we put that in there, was because of the comments that you made. So I, I mean, we'll have to let Mr. Cole to answer that question, but that's what my assumption was. As long as it's town-owned parks, it doesn't really matter where it is, it's just like, it's not HOA parks.
So then the plan is Tri-View submits a plan to update the parks that they maintain for, for the town.
I'm not there yet, I think we've discussed what comes from rule, from rule perspective later, where we create the parks committee.
Committee. Okay.
And we've got representation from.
Both districts.
Both districts, right, both sides, and they collaborate with the creation of the master parks plan and, and whatnot, to make sure that the money is doled out equally. I, I can't, this is just to collect the tax.
Okay, okay, thank you, to get on the.
Right, right, right. Are we, is that our, our assumptions are correct, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Good, okay, public hearing item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, anybody online?
Don't hear.
Okay, then we bring it back for further discussion or emotion from council.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty four, and ordinance submitting. Oh, I'm sorry, is that the right one? Which one, I'll be right, and submitting to the eligible voter, elector voting in the town's regular election to be held November fifth, twenty twenty five, a ballot issue concerning the. No, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place here.
November fifth, twenty twenty four.
Oh, November fifth, twenty twenty four, right. A ballot issue concerning the imposition of a lodging tax and contingent upon elector approval, amending the Monument Municipal Code to provide the same.
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
The motion passed six zero. Next, ordinance seventeen, twenty twenty four, an ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the town of Monument, the question of whether the home rule charter should be amended regarding the town manager residency, Mr. Cole?
This proposed ballot question and ordinance came out of your last meeting, and it is pretty simple, it would just expand the limitations for the town manager's residency from, instead of just being the town area, it would include also all area within the eight oh one three two zip code. There's really not much more than that to it, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council on that one? This actually puts it back to where it was pre-home rule.
Yeah.
So for those that are following along at home, before home rule charter was passed, the entire zip code was eligible for residency for the town manager.
I think this is a good one, I, I think it, it's, it's a, makes sense, and it, it's, to me, it's obvious, but.
Okay, great, any discussion, any questions for Mr. Cole? All right, public hearing item, anybody here would like to speak for or against this one? Okay, we'll move on to online, is there anybody online, Will?
There are none here.
All right, then we'll bring it back for further discussion or emotion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number seventeen, twenty twenty four, an ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the town of Monument, the question of whether the home rule charter should be amended regarding the town manager residency.
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
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 Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Member Chronic.
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero, along with the cookies.
The cookies pass six to zero, too.
Right, next up, for that ordinance passed, motion, resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty four, resolution approving a contract with smart systems for technology and audiovisual upgrades to town council chambers, Mr. Williams.
Mayor and council members, appreciate your time this evening, if you recall back on the fifth of August, we brought up a resolution to approve smart systems to start the process of doing our council members' technology upgrades and to make sure the contract is signed correctly, and that, they completed the contract, they got it to the clerk, and this ordinance forty-eight, twenty, resolution twenty, forty, twenty twenty four is just to show you the cost and then show the timeframe that is, we're going to start right away, and it's about mid-October that we're looking at, having everything complete. But there's, one of the long poles is the, the actual digital signage for it to get ordered and configured and get in, that's why it's middle of October as the closure date, and you'll make note to the, the cost that I gave you during the, the fifth of October, or the fifth of August. I actually added thirty-six hundred dollars on there to get a three-year hold on the support time instead of it going up every year, so it was something that they offered, and I thought that was smart to do for three years of support. So with that being said, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Grabbing the, the hold for three years, so it doesn't go up, thank you for that.
So good job on keeping us under budget.
Yeah.
That is fantastic, we are going to have a portable system, too, for those days where town hall is not available to us, and we need to go to a much larger venue, or maybe we host it in a park, or whatever, but we've now got the capabilities to do that now. Awesome, thank you, Mr. Williams, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams? All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty four, a resolution approving a contract with smart systems for technology and audiovisual upgrades to town council chambers.
Second.
A motion in a second, Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
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 That motion passed six to zero. I am very much looking forward to us not having to do verbal votes like that anymore, just push a button.
It's going to pop up I, right? Just.
I, yes, and no. All right, just for you.
Or nay, well, it has to be I, yes, nay, no, right?
Bye.
Can we move on?
Well, I mean, we're like racing through this meeting, we gotta kind of.
All right, well, if we're talking about those digital nameplates, since you like using I, like a pirate, you will no longer be council member, you'll be seaman or seaman apprentice, seaman recruit, nautical. That's a, that's a tough position to get, you, not anybody can be a bosis.
Shipman's mate, no, okay.
Anyway, all right, we'll move on to, what's that? Oh, come on, there's some, those are fighting words. All right, we'll go on to discussion items, position updates, Madeline.
Good evening, council, this will primarily be an update just on our finance manager position, that was posted on August ninth, so we're not quite at the two-week timeframe, so we've had several applicants, and we'll begin reviewing those and start scheduling some interviews here in the next week or so. As far as the town manager position, HR has been a little bit working on looking at job descriptions and salary surveys and things like that, but hasn't made a lot of progress just due to the current workload in HR with some of our other open positions as well, but something we intend to, to look at here in the next couple of weeks.
I personally am in no rush for that position.
Well, I would think we'd wait until after the election, so we know what the parameters are of the.
Right.
So that, that's not a bad discussion piece, that, I, I like that idea where we don't so much as put it on hold, but delay, well, yeah, essentially put on hold for the election, is that doable? I I I actually like that idea, honestly.
It's ours and we also have a another, we have some HR stuff that needs to be dealt with. As the reviews, the three sixty reviews, the performance stuff, the engagement survey. Um, there's a lot of stuff to go around that position and I don't want us to bring it to a screeching halt. But I want to give Madeline time to get her uh processes in place uh as we go forward with that position.
I'm okay with that.
Seems to be working pretty smoothly around here at the moment, so no sense in rocking the boat.
It ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay, was there, what about the planner two position?
Um, it looks like we're still reviewing applications. Um, sadly, they haven't, there haven't been a lot of qualified. Um, people that have applied for that, so I know that Emily and Dan are still working on that position.
That's too bad. Are we uh? We out of the pay, pay bracket?
Um, I, information I can get for you as to what might be some of the challenges with that position.
It's been a couple of months, right?
Yeah. Yeah, around four.
If I remember correctly, the first round, there were a lot of unqualified and and Dan had to put in. Had to amend the the position because a lot of. Folks were applying that maybe we're not quite there for the planner two.
Correct, yes.
So I I think we're at four, four or five months at this point.
Correct, yes, but this is, this is pretty normal for planning positions across the country. They're just for whatever reason hard to fill. So, um.
Intern?
It's a planner.
Planner to challenge for an intern.
You want to do it?
Do we have an internship?
Yeah.
Process separate from planner two, but would would that help at all or no? It's just.
We don't have one formally. We do have some relationships with like UCCS that we could engage in. Um, but we, we already have a planner one position. So an intern would probably not meet the needs that Dan is looking for to to really fill out his department.
All right, um, any other updates?
No, those were the only, the only updates I had unless you had any other questions I could answer for you.
Anybody?
Thank you.
All right, we will continue our breezing through. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, so.
Are you applying for the planner two position?
I'm not. But I I wanted to, Bob and I wanted to give you guys an update and it's kind of fitting with these position updates. So uh, as some of you guys know, you know, I was a prior service member myself. And have decided that I miss it a bit, so uh, I'm going to be joining the Navy Jaguar. And so, yeah, I knew you'd be happy, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to be starting to transition out um as assistant town attorney over the next month. Um, so obviously it will still be available, but uh, we just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations and a star loss.
You had Bob completely accountable.
Yes, this is totally his fault, totally ran you out of the the company. So does this mean that you have your own TV show now?
No, not quite, I wish.
Yeah, I would say that uh, if we could keep Javon for the rest of his career, we would do that. Uh, and who knows, maybe he'll come back to us at some point. It's definitely going to be our loss and the Navy's gain. Uh, he's, he's just a great attorney. You all know that and he's a great guy. Uh, I couldn't say more, more good things without uh, his head getting so big it filled the screen, but uh. Yeah, uh, really want you to understand how valuable Javon has been for us to be able to get your work done. Uh, and we've got good plans to to try to fill his shoes, um, and we will do so, but um. Uh, we, we certainly wish Javon the best in in this next, this next endeavor.
Good for him.
Yes.
Good luck, Javon.
Congratulations.
Before you leave.
Oh, sure.
There's, I'm sure Ken and I can come up with some interesting hazing rituals.
Well, I'm going to forge you a point, I'm I'm actually going to forge you a point of contact. I know uh, a senior chief that's serving in the Jaguar. She's down in uh, Tenskill, Florida.
Okay.
So maybe if you have some questions, the least she'll be able to get you the answers to get you started off on the right foot. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks so much. I appreciate that.
Take all the fun out of hazing.
It's not hazing, it's not called hazing.
Oh, initiation? Times have changed. All right, thank you for that update, Javon, appreciate it. Um, we will move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak? You know, just showed up and don't want to say anything. All right. All right, is there anybody online that would like to speak? Mr. Smith.
Your mic has been allowed. You just have to unmute on your side.
There's a technical difficulty, sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hey, this is probably completely inappropriate, but just hearing the news of uh, Javon leaving for the United States Navy. I would like to add also as a, as a retired Navy chief myself and a planning commissioner that's worked with Javon. Thank you for your service and I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, sir. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Not inappropriate at all.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else with public comment?
No, mayor.
Anybody here coming back, go once, twice, okay? Um, we have completed public comment. We have uh, any future agenda item authorizations. That was brought up over email and changed to how we were going to word things. Does anybody have any future agenda items they would like on the agenda? Anybody in the council?
Are we um? Is there a listing of all the different ballot uh discussion or the ballot items that are up? To this or to discuss to that might be put on this upcoming ballot? Is there a cutoff in September?
There is a cutoff, this meeting, this is the cutoff meeting. We have two, right? Two items, Mr. Cole, is it a total of two or was it three?
You'll have, you have two items plus your council election.
Okay. And the cutoff was this meeting because the next meeting, by the time the next meeting comes up, we would have to have submitted the. The items to the county.
That's right, the the ballot certification uh deadline is September sixth. And we have to put these on by ordinance and so the ordinance has to be uh. Done ten days in advance, so we could still add items, but the time is very short and you'd have to have a special meeting.
No, I, I, I go back to this whole um paying the future um. Council members after the next election. I I'd prefer to see it, you know, we're talking about taxpayer monies. We're following credit card purchases and everything else. Um, I think, you know, to keep in, keep uh. Morally and and um integrity wise, I think it should, I think that that should be initiated through a ballot measure. Through, for the uh, for the voters to decide that, not, not the council to decide the future council. Because some of us will actually be on it, some of us may not.
Well, I, I, as you know, I disagree and I've gone to Mr. Cole and he said we can do this by ordinance. And there's, to me, um. We approve larger numbers, significantly larger numbers of expenditures at this council. And we do what it would cost to remunerate the the council members. And I think that. You know, it 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 seems like a a net, it seems like it's something that um. If if we're going to do it, we do it for everything, instead of just doing it for one thing. So it almost um alleviates the need for a council. If you're going to keep, if you have to go to the voters to approve the expenditure, then the councils. Becomes, becomes moot.
I think with this specific expenditure, using taxpayer money. I think, because that's not what we ran on. We didn't, we didn't run for that when we went up for election. Um, I know that I get upset when I see our Congress in DC vote for themselves for pay raises. Without us having any say or any input on that and why they hold up funds and service members don't get paid. You know, at the same time, I just, I, to be fair and transparent instead of um. Uh, because I think some of the residents will be upset about it and I think others will be okay with it. I, but I'd rather, I'd rather be transparent and upfront. Because if it does go through, I, my votes, regardless, my vote's going to be no for it. Um, but if it does go through, then if, and if I do get some stipend, it's going to go to uh, a charity in the town of Monument.
But that, and that's your choice.
You know.
Certainly, but I think that um, and um Janet Lidofsky. Uh, made a public comment at the last meeting that to me made a lot of sense. It at least gives somebody who might not otherwise be able to serve on council to be able to do that. If, for example, they have childcare needs um, or or any kind of caregiver needs. Um, and so they could use that money to offset their ability to serve on council. That to me made a lot of sense as well. Um, I'll go back to the, you know. We're one of very few. Municipalities in the state of Colorado that doesn't. Have a stipend for counsel.
Sure, and did the other municipalities, did they hold a vote for it or did they just nominate themselves for it?
They don't have to hold a vote. They, this isn't, this is an ordinance thing. This is a legal thing.
I understand that, but still.
But this is.
Legal is legal, not, it's perception.
But we're being transparent. We're having discussion, we're writing at ordinance, that's transparency. I don't see how it's not. But. We're not going to solve that here today. I don't think.
Not under the future agenda item topic.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cole.
If I could just add one, one point to that discussion, I don't really uh have a preference how you go about this. But yeah, if if you did uh prove a stipend by ordinance, it would not apply to anyone in office. At that point, you know, it would only apply to prospectively elected or appointed council members. Just, just wanted to put that out there, so.
Anybody elected, anybody elected or appointed in November twenty twenty four. Would, if the ordinance passed prior to that, would be eligible. Those that sat on council that were not elected, November twenty twenty four would not be eligible.
Right.
Correct.
Until the next. Right.
In other words, you, in other words, you, Jim and myself, well, Jim's running, but you and myself and Steve. Would not be eligible until twenty twenty six, if we ran again and won. I I don't care either way, to be honest. But.
And I see your point and I have no problem either way. I'm kind of in vote of the um, the stipend. But if we were to have the town people vote, like I I would, it wouldn't bother me either way, but I get your point. I mean, we're doing it, it's transparent. Um, yeah, I don't. So twenty twenty six, so not, so if they voted in this election. Why wouldn't, I don't understand.
If we pass an ordinance before the voting, you can't vote, you can't vote for yourself to have money.
And that's fine, so by twenty twenty six.
Because we're not eligible to be reelected in twenty twenty six.
You're on a four-year.
Yeah.
Both of us were appointed and Ken are on a two-year.
And Jim's term is up.
Yeah, and Jim's term is up. You, you, you three were on a, on a four-year. And personally, I like that, the, the idea that we vote for an ordinance that doesn't take into effect until the next election.
That state.
Is it? Okay.
It's not anything we invented and you can pat ourselves on the back for the state.
All right, I'll, I'll save the petting.
Yeah. Years ago. All right, um, that, that sort of moved us into council comments.
I do actually have several items for future agendas.
Oh, perfect. We'll go back to future agenda items.
Um, so we've had several organizations reach out and ask if they can do presentations. So one of them being Silver Key, um, and we would be looking at potentially the third. Or the sixteenth for a presentation. We also have Fountain Creek Watershed who would like to do a proclamation and a presentation, a short presentation. For the Creek Week proclamation and they would like to do that on September sixteenth. And then I have a few other, they aren't necessarily for council meetings, future meetings. But they are future meetings that we would like council members to attend. Um, so the first one, we had been talking about a town council planning commission workshop to be held on September eleventh. Um, which would be the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. However, that's also the same night as the CML Fall District Meeting in Cripple Creek. So. We could move, we could schedule the town council planning commission workshop for another date. Or if that date works for you, September eleventh. Um, and and you could find another CML meeting to attend. It just wouldn't be the district board meeting. And then I have one more item, which was also sent out um through email to you on Friday, which is in regards to the Loop Workshop. On September ninth, and this is in conjunction with the um Special District Conference in Keystone. So it would be, this workshop would be sometime between twelve PM and seven PM in Keystone. And they'd be looking for one to two council members to attend with the rest of the Loop Authority members.
I do have a question about that. Is it, what capacity are we attending the Loop presentation?
You would be attending as council members for the town of Monument.
Okay. It, are, are we?
You're going to learn. Listen, we can't make any decisions.
Right. But. It's. Is it implying that town of Monument? Is going to do the loop or?
Doesn't imply anything.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Listening and learning.
Listening, okay. I I've been to the SDA multiple times when I was on Tribe View. It's a great conference. Um, and um, there, there's a lot to be learned. Uh, I learned a lot when, when I went to those. I just want to make sure that. We're presenting the right in, we as council members, when we attend, that we're, we're not. Um, leaning too far over our skis, because we, we haven't made a decision yet on Loop or or NDS. So I, what's the, what's?
Several members went to the NDS grand opening. I didn't take that as a sign that we're going with NDS.
I mean, the NDS, yes, the, the grand opening is, happens to be inside town of Monument. Um, but the loop is not a thing yet. We, we haven't chosen yet. So I, I just want to make sure that we're not inadvertently.
It's informational.
Okay, cool.
Right, so two people, is that what they're looking for? That's what the.
One to two people.
They also, they, and and the, the, the district leader was asking us to attend a dinner Wednesday. I got one person asked, one person asked where it was, where it was, and one person said they were willing to go.
I, I highly recommend the SDA conference. It's a really.
Done that.
Yeah, it's a really, really good conference.
I could probably go to that, Madeline. I'll, I'll let you know tonight or tomorrow.
Okay.
Me too.
Um, so several of you are interested in going, it sounds like.
I have no interest because of other things, so. If you've got two people that want to go, great.
I also had via email, um, council member Romanello was also interested.
Perfect, sounds like you've got.
Three, that's good.
Three people interested.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to that? The um. One of the things we have to do as soon as.
one of the things we have to do as soon as possible is if we know that any or most of you are going to go, we have to uh, see about hotel reservations if you're going to stay overnight. And being that it's only, um, about three weeks away, I think, two and a half, three weeks away. That's that we might not be able to find.
It fills up fast.
At the same hotel.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can find some.
Probably already filled.
Yeah.
I would probably just commute. I probably wouldn't stay.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Okay.
So you would drive back?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'll let you guys work. Since, since we're talking about the water stuff, I'll just bring up again the email from the president, uh, and board of directors of Denala asking the board to, if you would like to go to dinner Wednesday, August 21st at the Aspen American Bar and Grill. He needs to know on the 16th, which is three days ago. It's, it's in.
It's in Colorado Springs.
Colorado Springs. They just call it.
Not in Aspen. It's.
It was in the email. You could click on the link, uh, brings up Google Maps and it looks like it's on the Can-Am highway and, uh, Tenderfoot Hills Road, wherever the heck that is. I sent it.
He sent it Friday.
Sent it Friday. So if, if, uh, if y'all look at it tonight and figure out, I will give him like tomorrow afternoon, a, a number of, I'm not going.
I responded, yes.
You responded, yes. Uh, if anybody else wants dinner and it's to me, it's about the Water Congress Summer Conference. The Loop Partners Board members to me get acquainted, et cetera, et cetera. Wish we had more notice about it, but anyway.
I can't make it.
Today, that's a CML, while there's a meeting in Cripple Creek, what date was that?
It's September 11th, Wednesday, September 11th.
Did you get that from CML? It should have been in the CML newsletter. All right. And Cripple Creek's what? An hour and a half?
Depending on how fast you take those curves.
Just call me Mario.
Okay.
For Danica.
Danica. Yeah, I know her. Other, other, uh, future dates, the Loop Workshop 99 Keystone. Uh, we, if there's enough people going to Cripple Creek, then we should postpone those, the council planning information workshop. But I'm the only one who signed up that I know of.
I'm going to probably sign up for it. I'm working out some details.
For Cripple Creek?
Yep.
All right.
I, I signed up too.
Three.
So in looking at the potential, the workshop, one of the items that Dan wanted to discuss during this workshop was kind of the scope of the comprehensive plan. So would you like to schedule this a special workshop or would you like to do this during the planning commission meeting in October?
Um, what, what, do they not have anything on their agenda for September?
No, I believe that they do, but this would just be in addition to.
And so when, what day is the workshop in, uh, October?
I don't know. It's the second Wednesday. I don't, I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Looks like.
That'll be.
It would be the ninth. The ninth of October.
Okay. And it would be at nighttime, six?
Mm-hmm. Correct. Six o'clock is when planning commission meeting would be. I'd have to talk with Dan to understand what time we pulled the workshop. I don't know if he would have it before, after. We're, we're, with this new, this conflict, we just needed to work out another date.
Okay. Um, I think we should probably look for another date if you're going to have three members go into the Cripple Creek. Yeah. And if anybody else wants to go, go through Portia, whatever. It's, it's a pretty cool event. You know, get to, and you get to see other area, other areas of our district, our CML district. Okay. Here from, um, usually Kevin Bombers there or representatives or both. And they do some giveaways and, um, yeah, get to see other parts of the region.
It, is this, um, I, I don't know how, how I missed this, this email, but is this during the day, evening? Evening? Okay.
You'd be doing dinner.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's, this one's a $30 town. Picking out the check or you can write your own if you want. I did. Um, and you get dinner.
Okay.
And bring tickets.
Yeah. Uh, you guys staying overnight or you're driving back?
I'm driving back.
Okay. Okay.
But there is hotel information in the announcement.
Okay.
Wanna?
Okay.
Gamble.
If you want to gamble, right? Or see the donkeys. Right, donkeys?
Yeah.
They have the donkey days up there or something?
Yes, the donkey races.
It's already over.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll see if they can bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Um, council comments, future authorization items?
Did you have any opinion on when the Silver Key presentation should come?
We can do the six.
Whatever you, whatever, when you look at the agenda, whatever one works.
When was the, when was the, the water presentation given?
Yeah, we have an executive session on that, right?
On September 3rd.
There you go. September 3rd. Coming up, your next one, the executive session on the Loop. Be there, be square.
I thought they were coming to us to give us numbers.
They are.
Executive session.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah, it has to be in the executive session.
You know what? They work it out with the attorneys and if they say it needs to be an executive session.
Okay.
Are we going to hear back from the Tribe View and Norton Delivery System as well?
Um, I don't know. I, I don't know. We'll, Tom, are we going to be hearing, Madeline, are we going to be hearing back from NCS?
I am not aware of the NDS uh, wanting to come back and talk anymore. I know they were here several months ago um, with their final numbers and things, but we can always ask them to come back. I'm sure they're, I'm sure Jim would more than gladly do that.
I, I think I would be interested to know.
Numbers.
The numbers adjusted for, A, the, the publicized 48% increase in CSU's rates and how that will impact Tribe View's contract as well as the potential of, um, 10,000 new homes, uh, being built in a yet to be annexed region of El Paso County, what's it called? Ameris?
Maris.
Maris. Amara.
Was that approved?
No, no.
But it's coming, yeah.
And the CSU has said that all of their customers will be on the, on the hook for paying for that infrastructure. Matatu Springs Mayor showed up and spoke against it because it was going to impact him and this, the town, the city of Matatu. Um, also, uh, uh, Fowden, the Broadmore was going to be paying a million, over a million dollars over 11 years to pay for the infrastructure for a community that doesn't exist yet. And I just want to make sure that.
Yes, absolutely.
If NDS is going to be impacted financially with either of those, we need to know about it.
Or all three? Was it those three, two or three?
See if we can get him on the next available. Of Jen.
Right.
Those are actually very good questions that we need answered.
He probably needs them answered.
Yeah.
Because he's going to have to answer.
As a rate, or I want them answered, but as a council member.
Our, our rate payers in that district have a right to know.
Yes.
The deal that he got into with CSU.
Yes, sure.
Is going to impact their rates because CSU has decided, A, we're going to put the burden on all rate payers. Even those that are.
Out of, out of the.
Right.
Yes.
General service area.
Thank you.
Uh, and, and the infrastructure cost burden, I get to be approved development.
Yep.
All right.
I have some things.
You have some things to go.
Okay. So I want to just kind of put this on the radar for town staff. So, um, the Delacaw Ranch property I heard is under contract alongside Old Denver Highway. And I want to try to figure out what we need to do to try to establish some type of right of way through there because that property line, I think, goes pretty much up against Old Denver and we got the trail on the other side. So I don't know what we do with El Paso County as far as that goes. I just want to kind of get that on the radar before this gets too far down the line. And, um, then, uh, roundabouts in Jackson Creek North. You've probably seen some of that, those photographs on social media where those roundabouts are not designed to code. Um, if you look at the, um, El Paso County or CDOT um, design standards for those things, there's no way any trucks with trailers or semis or even just RVs can get around those things. So they're driving over the middle of them and breaking the curbs and running over the signs. I see that as comparable to Willow Springs and their roundabout on the north end, which, um, is about 122 or five feet in diameter. And these ones in Jackson Creek North are 72 feet. So, um, something needs to be done there. I don't know what that would be. I mean, originally there was 80 foot right of ways in there. So there was some room to do some stuff, but you know, those have all been shrunk and those roundabouts just don't function. And then the third thing, which, um, I want to bring up that has absolutely nothing to do with anybody in this room. But, but I want to, I want to bring this up because back in 2020, the, um, planning department put together a request to update the impact fees. And they did a lot of work on this. So I don't know where this information came from and I'll email it to you, Madeline. So you can see how current this stuff is, but these impact fees that they asked for were pretty comparable with the stuff that I've been talking about over the last several meetings. And, um, so somebody did a lot of research on this and they're substantially different than, than our impact fees that we have now. And, and, and this has to do with even, you know, final flats and preliminary flats and everything else. I mean, they're thousands of dollars higher than what we charge right now. And this was done in 2024 years ago that never went anywhere. It didn't, was never discussed. I could never find it on an agenda or a study session or anything. It just got, it got done. It was a request that got asked for and got thrown in a drawer, I suppose, but, um, anyway, I want to send that to you so you can see if you can find out maybe where they got this information and maybe it'll help us with our process as we're going forward. That's all I had.
Any other council comments? Okay, then, uh, we will go into executive session before we do, or after we go into executive session, we will, um, take a quick five minutes and we will adjourn after the exec, from the executive session.
So you want to make the motion before the break?
Make a motion. You can make a motion now.
Okay. So, can, everybody good? All right. I'll make, make, uh, make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 sub force, sub four, sub B for conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding qualifications for office.
Your motion is second.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Mayor Lookie?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Furia?
Okay, that motion passes six to zero. Take a five minute recess. Mr. Cole, be right back. You can kick Chad out of that session.
I will be here.
Okay, be right back.
Okay.